I know, I knew she was.
Everyone's right here.
What's in there?
No, you.
That's everybody.
No jokes not here.
I did, yeah.
We're gonna go ahead and start.
Alex and I were sharing them.
Oh yummy. Those got the kind of stuff in it?
Peanut butter.
That's never good.
Don't even want to fill this up.
Councilmembers, I'd like to call the meeting, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We are, we are being recorded, so, um, welcome to the city council study session of Tuesday, October 30th, 2018. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one is a discussion regarding Cleveland Area Rapid Transit Program Funding and Operations. And I think Mr. O'Leary and Catherine Walker are going to help with the presentation. And we also have Chris Glenn, the director of...
I'm back here behind you, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Okay, behind us, and I noticed Neil Gollum-Holly is here with us, and we also have representative from ACOG, John Sharp. Anyone else here representing an organization? Oh, ODOT, okay. I'm sorry, I should've come back. All right. Okay. Ernestine Embro from ODOT. So, good, we're represented.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, appreciate that. I'm gonna kick us off, and then Catherine's gonna be amongst the heavy lifting tonight. So, those introductions were important. All of our major stakeholders are here tonight from CART, or the University of Oklahoma, ACOG, as you mentioned, John Sharp is here, and they play a key role in all things transportation in this region, certainly for Norman. Ernestine Embro is the Transit Division Manager for ODOT and liaison to the Federal Transit Administration. So, we work with Ernie a lot on other things, our habit over the years, but she is our liaison, and really CART's liaison to FTA. And so, the only group that's not physically here tonight is the Federal Transit Administration. They're based out of Region 6 in Fort Worth, Texas, and I'll have to not ask them to come along today, but we will be working very closely with FTA as we talk about this subject. I wanna put a plug in for our Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Catherine will talk about this here in a minute, but for anything transportation, always remember we have one of these. And we think it's an excellent comprehensive transportation plan. It was adopted by council in May of 2014, and it was designed, as maybe you know, to be comprehensive. So, everything transportation, whether we're talking buses, or rail cars, or commuter rail, or bicycles, or pedestrians, or cars and trucks, and that sort of thing. So, there's a reference in here to transit, and as I mentioned, Catherine will speak to that, but if you ever have questions about transportation, I suggest you start here. I always do. It never goes away from my desk. It's really a well-done piece, and again, we had a 45-member citizen committee that worked for 18 months on this. And so, you all had great representation as we talked about the important parts of transportation. Last thing I'll mention is this topic tonight of this notion of a transfer of a transit system, we may be the only city having this conversation in the country. This is a rare thing. You don't transfer transit systems, certainly transit systems that have been in operation for 38, almost 40 years, very often. It's a very rare thing that we're talking about tonight. And I just say that to say that we're learning our way along, as you all will, as we go through this process. We're starting tonight, we've got a long way to go, and there's a lot of different destinations we could end up in, in terms of how this plays out over the next several months or years. And so, with that, Catherine's gonna kick it off, and give a little background.
Okay, so, as Sean said, I'll give you a little bit of background to start with. We talked about this in September, but I wanted to include it again because it gives us some context. In 1978, the city first contracted with the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority, CAPA, for a six-bus route transportation system, but that contract expired after one year due to poor ridership. In 1980, OU started the campus area rapid transit system, CART, but a different, different name still, and funded all of it initially, hoping that the interest would increase over time, they could expand beyond the university campus. And then in 1985, the city adopted a resolution dealing with the FTA funds, so that CART could expand to non-university related service, and then the name was changed at that time to Cleveland Area Rapid Transit. Now, they transport more than 1 million passengers annually on seven city routes and six university routes. They, of course, have the weekday commuter route to Oklahoma City, and then CART access, which is the paratransit service. As Sean mentioned, we adopted our Comprehensive Transportation Plan in 2014, and it took the 2008 CART Long Range Plan and incorporated a lot of those elements. We actually had a subcommittee appointed just for transit, and they identified three major deficiencies, which won't come as any surprise to you all: limited Saturday and evening service, absence of nighttime and Sunday service, and then a need for increased service frequency. And it recognized the same problem we have today: inadequate funding is the biggest constraint to increasing those services, and then suggested multiple funding strategies. Some of these recommendations from that transit subcommittee were to extend service hours, add Sunday service, match the CART access service hours to the fixed route service hours, maintain the service frequency year-round, so you don't see a drop in frequency when the students aren't in town, add a new circulator route. They talked about a pilot project to actually reconfigure the Main Street route to create a grid network, and then talked about some other similar changes to the routes to target those key corridors and expand the service area. So, currently, the bus service is still operated by OU through CART. They are funded by the FTA grant funds. OU, the cities, the state of Oklahoma contributes some, and Norman Regional Hospital contributes some. The city was notified by OU in August that revenues are insufficient to cover the expenses, but the city approved its annual funding agreement just last Tuesday. CART is doing what it always has done, which is managing the operations within the budget for the fiscal year. So, the focus of this is really the long-term planning, and so we wanted to talk to you a little bit about what that process looks like, and what information we would need to be able to really assess how that happens. I gave you some information in your packets about how other university cities deal with transit. Our situation is somewhat unique. Texas A&amp;M does run a big transit system, but they don't get any federal funds, so they don't do any disability services or anything like that. OSU has their own transit system, but they're under a completely different category of federal funding, because it's considered a rural community and not an urban community like we are. And the other communities with colleges typically have a city-run system with some partnership for campus services in some cases. So, the goal of OU, stated in their August letter, was to transfer the city portion of bus service to another operator by the end of this current fiscal year. We know that they can transfer federally-funded assets, which is primarily what those FTA funds are used for, to other eligible FTA recipients. That could be the city, it could be another provider like Embark, or even another third-party provider. But the transfer has to be done in coordination with FTA, and FTA has to approve whatever plan is developed. And we all agree that we want to ensure there are no gaps in service, of course. So, the steps to transfer service, as I said, is to develop a plan first. We think that plan would need to identify the capital equipment that would be transferred to the new provider, and what costs, if any, any additional capital needs to maintain services in accordance with FTA regulations, any additional capital and operational funding that would be needed to provide the service. And then, of course, we want to determine the appropriate provider of the service, whether it's the city or a third-party provider. Then, once that plan is developed, that gets presented to FTA, and once they approve it, we can effectuate those So, I know I kinda went through that a little quickly.
That's easy.
So simple, right? So, what we'd really like to do, and get your feedback on, is develop a request for qualifications to get a consultant to help us with this. And it's not our intention to slow the process down, but we want to have someone with the kind of experience with the FTA regulations and transferring service to help us through this process, so that we can make an informed decision. We think that, you know, we ought to include the stakeholder group, obviously the city, obviously CART. This is their equipment, their buses, their service we're talking about. We think including ODOT and FTA is important. That will help us down the road, I think, when we seek approval for the plan, and ACOG, because as Sean said, they are key to all transportation discussions in the area. And so, what we'd like to do is work with that group to develop an RFQ, bring that back to you all in January for approval. We'll be looking for funding sources, of course, for that prior to contract approval. There may be some grant funding available, things we want to explore as far as funding goes. And then, have that consultant work on a plan to submit to the Federal Transit Authority sometime in the spring. Obviously, June 30th has been the express goal of OU to transfer service, but with dealing with the federal government, it may be quicker, it may be slower, more likely slower, I would guess. So, we want to at least get this process rolling as quickly as we can, so that we can get these decisions made and get to the FTA. And of course, once that plan is developed, we would want to get citizen stakeholder group input from the members of our community who ride the bus and use that service, and then CART and the city would have to agree on any plan prior to submit it to FTA. So, that's what we wanted to get your feedback on. If that looks like a good, good path forward, if there's something else you think we ought to be doing, that's the feedback we need.
Councilmember Castleberry.
I would say one of the key, in my view, as far as on the request for qualifications, is somebody who's actually done this. Like you say, doesn't happen very often.
There aren't very many.
So, I mean, that may, I would like that to be our first step, if that's only two people in the entire country. If you don't have a pool to choose from, then maybe we need to find it out. But I think we definitely would have somebody, you know, not somebody, well, 35 years ago, I did this in Buffalo. I mean, fairly recent stuff, current law, that type of stuff. I know, you know, even like Holmes and Associates have done it, the RTA, you know, national type stuff like this. Somebody of that caliber, I think this is a, you know, and if we can incorporate this into, you know, possibly the RTA.
I think her name was actually even mentioned earlier, but you're right about the caliber. Yes, Councilmember Bearman?
I have two questions. One is, why can't the FTA kind of be our consultant on this? You know, if we bring them in early, there's probably no one who has more experience doing this than the FTA themselves.
As we understand, they're the regulator, they're not the doer, and I might ask Ernie, Ernie, did you hear that? The question is what role FTA can help us?
He's absolutely correct, they are the regulators, not the doers. And so, best the capacity and the technical capability of the outreach to the stakeholders will assist them in anywhere they need.
I think it's really, not to oversimplify it, but it's really a question of how we're spending those federal dollars that they care about, and that we're providing, or CART, or whoever it is, is providing the service that is appropriate according to their standards. We did discover yesterday, there is a, as you can imagine, in every federal government, a published process for how this is supposed to take place, and all the parts of that plan have to be submitted. But we don't believe that they're willing to provide that service as a federal agency. They're gonna be receiving our plan, not providing it.
And then, my second question is, do we know that all of these stakeholders are going to be interested in helping us pay for a consultant?
We don't know that. And that's a great question, that's, as Catherine said, that's one of the first questions, because the first question is, can we find a qualified firm that can get here quickly? It has to move fairly quickly. And then, what would that cost? And then, once we know that, then we'll, we certainly intend to ask all of our partners to participate. There has been suggestion that FTA has grant funding for this sort of work. We've not explored that any further at this point.
Because I think it would also be helpful to know ahead of time whether or not any of these stakeholders are even interested. I mean, cost, I'm sure, you know, would be a make or break for them, but if some simply are not interested in helping to pay for this, it would be good to know ahead of time.
Councilmember Hickman?
Oh. I know this is a rare thing that we do, but to me, it's a great opportunity, and so I really appreciate y'all's work, because a good public transit system is invaluable to our residents, you know, for mobility, to get the healthcare, education, all kinds of services, as well as for economic development. And I'd like to see us reach out to Cleveland County and the city of Moore, because of the examples you gave us, Catherine. One of the ones that really resonated with me, it's something that we've talked a little bit about, I think, in CPTC, was the Denton County one. Their transit system, they have, I think, three cities that are part of that county process, or that county system. They have a rail system that we don't need, because we hopefully will have RTA, but they built a system around that RTA rail system through, to those other cities and within those other cities. And, you know, I don't know if Moore or the county would participate, but it seems to me that with RTA, we think all hopefully coming, and Moore having stops in their town, Moore doesn't have a public transit system now, the county encompassing both Moore and Norman, and the opportunities for the increased ad valorem base, based on a good public transit system, that from the research that I've done, all indicates that will enhance the value of the ad valorem base and the value of the land with a good public transit system, maybe they'd be willing to at least be at the table and maybe not commit on day one, but kinda like we have with, through ACOG and with RTA, wanna be at the table to hear what's going on, and then decide at some point in time later if they want to help be a part of the funding. But I think if we don't ask them now, it's harder to get them to maybe come to the table later. So, I would at least ask that we make that request of them, that offer, because I think if they're willing to do it, and kinda like that Denton County example, which, I mean, the Denton County one, if you go look at their website, I mean, they have really great disability services, they have, you know, for low-income folks, for elderly folks, they have taxi credits and vouchers you can get, they have a Lyft program, like Uber program that you can utilize, and so, they have a really innovative program in lots of ways that I think if we can get the county and Moore to be a partner, partners with us, you know, in conjunction with CART and the university, it could be a pretty neat, robust program.
Appreciate that. Will do.
Councilmember Castleberry.
CART?
Yes, sir.
Are you willing to entertain, help pay for a consultant, or a portion of consultants?
I don't know in my position that I can agree to that, and I'm not looking at it, Neil, to tell you in my position, I cannot agree to anything until I see the cost.
I mean, conceptually, though. I mean, the idea is...
It's a question of, I think the university would certainly want to see what services are being brought to the table. Do we really need a consultant? Do we not? I kinda share the question of what type of expertise do we need, and we'd love to see what that would really bring to the table, and what the cost is, and what are we getting for that? And our experience with regulatory agencies from the university side, while they are the regulator, they're oftentimes also very helpful in helping you navigate those processes. So, if that's something that can be done without significant additional expense, obviously, the driving force for the university at this point is cost reduction, so spending more money to reduce costs is high on our priority list, but I think it's something we'd look at if there's some value.
But spend a little money upfront to save money in the future.
If there's value in consulting.
Appreciate that.
One thing that I would add is, is that, and we have spoken to FTA about this a few months back, just a scenario, what if we decide to do this? Of course, they're very helpful, but one thing that I realized is, is that there are very specific steps to doing this. There's not a lot of wiggle room. Yeah, there is, who's gonna pay for these assets, and who should, and that might be more of a mediator than a consultant. I'm not arguing against a consultant in the least bit, but FTA does have very specific steps of how this has to go. Sean and Catherine have done so much work on this, and they have been great about this, and the plan looks really good. I think one of the very next steps is, is probably Sean, Catherine, Taylor, myself, get on a call with FTA and discuss this with them next. We would likely know more after that call than we do today. Would be a really good, very next step.
So, you're talking more of a facilitator as opposed to a consultant type of stuff? I mean, you know, what's spending money, it's not gonna happen to me, if we've got somebody that can walk us through the process.
Here, here. We're with you on that.
I got, Catherine, that consultant, that big umbrella.
I believe the FTA can do that, that's my belief, but until we get them on the phone and really talk about our concerns, we don't know that. And I'm not advocating against a consultant at all, in the least bit. I just think a good, immediate next step is getting on the phone with FTA.
I think that, I mean, those are all good points, and I think that we should look outside of just the people that have been recommended, the people to be represented. I can definitely see how the county might want to play a role. I think some of it is gonna be kind of in steps. When do different people come online? But I guess what I was thinking more about the consultant was not just the step-by-step, how do you go about transferring a transit system from one group to another, but what are, if it is an opportunity, what are, which it is, then what are the ways that we need to look in a long-term planning way, at what are we going to have to do to change to make this what we want it to be? What's happening all over the country? Are there other kinds of rolling stock that we ought to be using instead of just what we're using? So, I mean, I'm looking at this, there's kind of a short-term, then a longer short-term, and then there's a really long-term strategic plan. If we want to do what we said in 2014 in terms of expanding services, then there's a number of things. We can't just transfer everything and add a few hundred thousand dollars. So, that's where I was looking at a consultant. So, maybe the consultant doesn't come in in the beginning, or maybe the consultant does just a small piece. I don't really know, but that was more of what I was thinking about the consultant, not just working us through the actual Councilmember Castleberry.
Yeah, to that point, I think we have an opportunity to design this from scratch, basically, and as opposed to just taking over a system that's not financially viable as it is, and that's just, that's rough at the cost, but, and that may be, we don't want any of those old buses, we want brand-new stuff, and I think that's to your point, and so, I think if we have somebody on the request for qualifications that could say, okay, if you guys wanna do that, here's how you would do it. If you want to transfer over, I mean, it's gonna smart some of the qualifications, and I want somebody that could ideally look at, hey, you know what, you guys have a chance to be cutting-edge and do some of this, but it's gonna cost you this much. Okay, well, we don't want to be on bleeding edge, cutting-edge is good. But ideally figure out a way that, you know, and I love the idea of a county coach with Moore, and I think, you know, they've got a quarter cent sales tax that expires pretty soon, so for funding options, I mean, I would really like to look at it from that standpoint, and then the RTA, I think we really have an opportunity here to create a transit system as opposed to just take one over.
Appreciate that.
Councilmember Hickman?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that, it's kinda what I was sitting here thinking, is, I don't necessarily know, to me, if the most important qualifications of this consultant are someone who's done a transfer of a transit system, but maybe someone who's helped to create one, you know, to start one, because that's what, how I look at this when I say opportunity, is granted, we have something that we're gonna, you know, take over, let's say, but as a part of this plan of that takeover, you know, do we redesign it? Do we have a different, you know, way that we do things? And that's where like, you know, I think like a Denton example is one that we could look at to see, you know, maybe we don't run the big airport-type shuttles, maybe we run more nimble, you know, vans, you know, for disability transportation and other things, you know, and even like the city of Arlington has gone to almost like a Lyft-Uber-type system for a lot of their transportation, public transportation needs, where, you know, they maybe have some fixed bus line routes, but they're going to more using technology and apps where you can request a ride and pay for it like you do if you're doing it in the private way. So, I love the idea of having someone who can bring some creative ideas to say, here's what you have to do to maintain service, unless you want to change service, and here's, you know, if you're starting from scratch, some of the things that you can do, knowing we're not totally, starting totally from scratch, but it's a new opportunity.
Appreciate that.
Councilmember Holman?
I agree with all the comments about it being an opportunity for a new system, it's more efficient, things like that. I do have a lot of concern about the continuity of services, and, you know, for me, having most of these students, a lot of students living in Ward 7, a lot of students that use the city bus routes to get to campus, and just the system in general, people that rely on the current routes, the way they are, to get to work or to school or whatnot, and kinda just have concern about how we go about making sure that whatever we do, that we don't lose service for six months or a year while we're figuring it out, you know what I mean? And so, and how this new system works with whatever system CART is going to maintain on campus, because again, a lot of students use the city routes to then connect to the campus routes, so I'm hoping that we can, we're able to all continue working together, and even if we end up with separate systems, they're still able to be used together by people like students that use them that way, so. I don't know about a consultant either, I think it could be something we need to think about. This sounds like it could be a very complicated process, but maybe it isn't as much as we think.
Councilmember Bearman?
I share a lot of Councilmember Holman's concerns. I don't want to break it to make it better in the end. I want to be sure that we maintain service, improve it, improve it where we can, but make sure that those who rely on it do have it. It's starting to sound like the scope of a consultant is maybe moving beyond what some of our stakeholders are interested in funding, you know, I mean, from, I can see from that perspective, they're just trying to give it to us. You know, what we do with it, what we do with it after that is going to be on us. You know, from CART's perspective, they, I'm sure, want a smooth transition and get what they can get for the assets that they have. The long-term plan is gonna be on us. I've lived in several college towns, making sure that whatever, whatever campus decides to run kind of on campus, and making sure that that meshes with the public transportation system. Usually can happen fairly, fairly easily, getting shuttles to bus stops, or whatever other long-term transit options we have, is not all that complicated, but I have a feeling that once they turn it over to us, they're gonna say, good luck, Godspeed, and looking forward to seeing what you come up with, and probably are not going to be as interested in helping to fund that part. So, there does seem to be a little bit of a difference of opinion on what FTA can do and how, the transfer can be complicated, but that doesn't mean that it's not procedural. and how, the transfer can be complicated, but that doesn't mean that it's not procedural. So I would be interested in seeing what a consultant would have to offer, maybe not necessarily just in terms of taking over a transit system, but a long-range plan. And I think a lot of that is probably going to be contingent on getting on a call with FTA and kind of seeing what the process is.
Yes, Councilmember Scott. So since they're going to be transferring some of the services, you know, our portion of the services, do we also get some of the buses?
That's a great question. And that, if I may, Mayor, I was going to mention, this really is a multimillion-dollar conversation. There are millions of dollars of assets today currently held by CART. They've received federal funding for 35 years, so buses, their building was built with federal funds, the transfer station, bus stops, I mean, there's multi-millions of dollars of assets out there that we have to figure out. First of all, do we receive those as part of a new system? Does CART keep those, or how is that done? And that, to Councilmember Biermann's point, you know, the one reality here is that the city could ultimately choose not to be the recipient. It could be some other agency or some other hybrid organization. It could be Embark, COTCA in Oklahoma City. There's a dozen models that Catherine and I have thought about that could be the ultimate outcome, and that's why we think we need the help, because we're just not transit experts. We, that's not what we've done in our careers, and there's a lot of difficult questions and multi-millions of dollars of decisions to make here, both for the university, the city, and/or the ultimate operator of this system.
I have a question about that. If it, when you say that we may not, you know, we may do something with Embark, is the city still managing that contract? What do you mean by that?
I think it would be similar to what we have with CART. So we would be assigning basically those FTA funds to Embark to operate the system or to whatever third-party provider. That's what Lawton and Edmund do. They have a third-party provider, they assign those FTA funds to that provider, and they have an annual contract each year to determine what their contribution's going to be, just like we do with CART.
That's true.
Okay, just good.
Also, there's two FTA guidelines, again, we have been meeting their guidelines.
Trying to do that.
Council.
Currently, FTA has different pots of money for such specific types of operations. So currently, FTA looks at Oklahoma City as a larger one, and CART is viewed as a smaller one, and the two funds will not, cannot mix. So they have to be kept separate. The other resources that CART currently has, if it is transferred, CART has the ability to determine how much of those assets they want to keep, and then from that point on, turnover or negotiate aspects of it that will go to the transit entity that ultimately takes over this operation.
I think building on that, that's one thing that CART could do now, is evaluate what route you're going to keep in your ideal world, what buses and all that, and know, so we know what we're working with going forward. I think that's something that we can move forward on.
That's very fair, and that's something that I think that we can do quickly. We basically know what routes we would keep, and then we know what vehicles would work well for us to operate. And that doesn't mean that we keep the best vehicles and give you our 20-year-old vehicles. We're not going to do that. Here's what I'll say, we're committed to the process, we're committed to the transition, we're not just going to walk away. Sure, it is our desire to get out of the public transportation business. We have a target date set by our administration that we would like to stick to, but we also know that there's a process, and we've been a federal recipient for a long time, and you don't just immediately cut ties. So we're committed to the process, certainly within reason, and we want to be good partners afterwards as well. The councilmembers that brought up that the campus routes need to connect with the Norman City routes, that absolutely needs to happen, and we'll be a good partner after this transition as well.
Councilmember Scott.
I think you were, I think Stephen was first.
Oh, Councilmember Holman.
I just, I think, you know, joining Embark would be a, would make a lot of sense, I guess, from the standpoint of eventually being part of a regional transit system. So being part of Embark, who's running the service in OKC Metro right now, would make sense, but I also think maintaining control over our own system, if we can figure out a way to do that, could be real, a real advantage to us as well. For as long, or until the RTA is officially up and going, maintaining control over our own system until that happens, I think makes a lot of sense as well. That way, we're in control of what's going on with routes and not an entity that's in the city or something like that, so. And then given the information about the federal funding, I guess we can't, we wouldn't be able to transfer it to Embark in that way. So I would like for us to explore a way to, for the city to run this service until regional transit is.
Okay, Councilmember Scott.
I second that. And also, I have just a, I guess, a weird question. CART won't really be Cleveland-area Rapid Transit, it'll be more like campus-area Rapid Transit, I guess, and so as far as naming rights go?
I don't, I don't know that we're committed to, that would need to be discussed. I don't know that we're committed to keeping the name. If the city wanted to take the name, we're committed to providing excellent transportation to our students going forward.
To the students, okay.
Don't know about the name. I can't say on that, but if it's something the city felt strongly about, I'm sure that you can take.
Councilmember Clark.
I have a question for you again with this pot of money. I like the county option. Would that classify as small urban?
A county is eligible.
Okay, thank you.
But would it be a small urban or larger urban, I think, Senator, you were getting at like Oklahoma City? If we were combined, is it?
I guess it wouldn't, I guess it wouldn't matter, because it'll be its own thing.
Okay.
Populations or category.
What is the cutoff? Do you know?
I'm going to say 50.
Small urban's 50 to 199,000 right now. We're writing a little down.
So the county has 300.
But with more, we'd be over that.
More.
But, yeah.
It wouldn't matter at that point, it would be our own entity though, right?
I would just say that I think that the county would be the operator, but the Norman urbanized area wouldn't change. So they would just receive the funds based on Norman's urbanized area, but even though they were the county, that wouldn't.
But what if we combined with more, and it was more and Norman together?
Yeah.
Under a county, like, almost like an RTA, like, we created a new entity, a trust, that more, Norman, and the county had officials sitting on, like the RTA.
Right.
That's what I was, that's what, in my mind, I was thinking.
But currently, more is included, just like Edmund, in OKC's urbanized area.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not sure how that would shake out with the funding on that, but Norman is its own urbanized area, and that's why they're able, or we're able to get our own federal funds.
Not nearly a suburb.
And it's unfortunate, we know that it's a recognized urban area, but it's not a created urbanized area.
We don't know what we're doing.
Councilmember Hickman.
I guess the last comment, I guess I had for you guys, sort of hearing some of this conversation and thinking about this, is that, from a timing-wise, one of the things I also noted from the Ditten County deal is they have a citizens advisory team. It's, in my mind, kind of like what we did with Stormwater, where we formed the citizens' advisory group committee while we were working on developing it, thinking that we may end up having it in place after we get something passed, knock on wood. That maybe we also, as a part of this process, as we're developing the plan, talking about these different kinds of issues, is it going to be a county-wide system, city-run system, is it going to be, you know, what all kind of things we're going to do, is creating this new idea. Maybe we also form a citizens advisory group, you know, with representatives. I would want to ensure that we have representatives from the disability community, like progressive independents on there, as well as others, you know, besides just our stakeholders we're talking about on the plan, that I could see a different citizen group that plugs in before we get to where we finalize the plan. If we engage this consultant to help us develop what we want our new system to look like, I could see that being really valuable input.
I'd also mention one more, just to plant a seed, not to complicate it any more than it already is, but as you know, later this week, your parts of council will be discussing a parking authority concept in the Economic Development Advisory Board meeting, and we've been discussing that for years, actually. It's pretty common that transit and parking get combined, sort of like COTCA or like CART. It's a very common marriage, for whatever reason, it just happens that way. So again, to the mayor's point, long-range, RTA could be commuter rail, transit, and parking for Norman. We, again, we haven't really been in the parking business big time for most of our existence, and we've never had to run the transit operation. So we got to rethink city government here a little bit on how you might want this to land in a few years, not immediately. Immediately, we need to focus on keeping the system running, but ultimately, this might take a really interesting form that could do many things that we don't currently do.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Well, to that point, I would like to see us incorporate parking in with this. I mean, I think, as a partner, pretty much cover you guys.
Yeah.
I mean, I think in most of those systems, it's the excess, you make your money, parking to cover your traffic. I mean, you really need the two together to, from a funding standpoint, have that source. I'd just rather it come in there, you know, park here, bus right there. So I'd like to have that vision of working, you know, and the county is working on a parking authority. So I think it makes sense to add that component to our plan.
Other comments or questions?
Just like clear guidance. You guys too. Clear as light. Appreciate this, we just need to move forward, and we've got to make some progress here, I'm sure.
Could I just go back to, so right now, council's not going to do anything else immediately, and you all are looking at the possibility of getting a consultant in January. There are still a lot of other things to talk about and where that consultant might fit in. When is, do you have an idea of when the committee is going to start working? I mean?
We've actually started, I guess, a little bit.
Okay.
Just forming the major stakeholders, but Catherine's projection, I think, is pretty close.
And the major stakeholders being the people we've talked about being here.
City, university, ODA, ACOG, and FTA are the major players, at least in the technical sense.
Really add the county in that.
And now adding the county into that, based on tonight's conversation.
Should RTA also have a voice on that?
ACOG.
So ACOG is RTA and Embark.
Yes, that's kind of the beauty of John and his team, that they are our transportation planning organization.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's why. That will be helpful.
And it's, as Chris Lynn mentioned, you know, our first task really is to get on the phone with FTA and start.
And so we can just expect reports as we go along, when you have something substantive to tell us.
We'll do that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Didn't have enough on your plate, so.
All right, item number two is discussion regarding possible charter amendments to have the city attorney and internal auditor positions report directly to the city council, and that's Catherine. She's been working on this.
Okay, so just, you guys got all the information in your packet, so I'm just going to briefly introduce it, and then really, this is more for your discussion than for my presentation. We've had requests to look at adding the city attorney and the municipal auditor position, which was to be added into the budget at mid-year, in the charter as being under the purview of city council. Oftentimes, what you hear cited is our neighbor to the north, Oklahoma City, who has that very form of government, very same example, and so the items in your packet, you have a lot of information about what Oklahoma City has done in terms of the auditor position and in terms of the attorney position, and the language that's been drafted, just an initial draft, obviously, it just mirrors what we already had for the city manager, the only other position under your purview currently. And so you'll see some qualifications in there for the city attorney and the city auditor. Those are just from the job descriptions, but other than that, the language mirrors closely what we have now for the council appointment of the city manager. So really, we just need your feedback, so we know what to draft. If it was to be, I think the memo goes through a little bit about the history of charter changes. We've done quite a bit of work with the Charter Review Commission when we do large changes, historically speaking, when we've done more cleanup items, and that's a recent example I can think of, is changing the election dates to match federal and state law. That was done without the Charter Review Commission and just went straight to a vote of the people. So however you want to do that, we will draft accordingly. It's, I know you're pretty familiar from your Stormwater and Transportation Bond discussions with your upcoming deadlines for elections, so we would follow those same deadlines to get this on an election, if that's what you all desire.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Do you know, did the previous charter commission, was this one of the topics that they looked into, or have?
They looked at some language changes to this section, and it was really holdover language from even a previous Charter Review Commission, where they had just not ever acted on it. And so some changes were made, the change in language about how to get an investigation onto your agenda, but no other changes were made at that time.
But did they talk about this type of change? If they did, and if they did, what'd they say?
I don't recall.
I did some research on that this afternoon, I just didn't have a chance to get back to you, right up to the meeting. It was in 2005 and 2006 that the Charter Review Commission looked at language to have the department heads report directly to council on an annual contract. That was discussed pretty thoroughly through the Charter Review Commission process, came forward to council, it was postponed indefinitely by council at that time. So what Catherine is referring to in 2011, when we came back, and again in 13, they wanted to start with what was left on the table, so to speak, so it was discussed again, and then thus the compromise of the investigation piece came into the charter.
So 2005, when the Charter Review Committee, for lack of a word, approved it or suggested it, and then council postponed it, and so they brought it back up and?
I wouldn't say they suggested it. It was given to them as one of the things to look at by some members of council. They held a public hearing, got a lot of public input, a lot of different citizen groups and employment groups that argued the difficulties of having that type of a process, and then it was ultimately that if all that information was submitted forward to council, and then that council decided not to move forward with it.
I did have a pretty lengthy conversation with Doug Coverley, who was a council member, also served on the Charter Review Committee, and his understanding was, and his personal feeling was, that they decided that the idea, and at the time, they were looking at the, first, they looked at all department heads, and then they looked at the major department heads, and at the time, they decided that that really wasn't, that really wasn't their recommendation for the council to be the direct, I guess, the hireer and the firer. And then he just gave me his own opinion on it. So the one thing is that all of these discussions about council and staff and department heads have, they went through a Charter Review Committee process, and so I just think that's a really important thing to understand. I don't know about how it would apply to an internal auditor, because that's a new position, and it's not a, it's not a department head.
No, that wouldn't be a department.
Is it?
It would be its own separate department, really.
It'd be its own separate department, and I think you'll probably need to compensate them accordingly.
Yeah.
I would think.
So they would fall under this same, I mean, in terms of being a department head?
Yeah, one thing I would say is, is I think this, apparently it works in Oklahoma City, we don't know, I don't know, Oklahoma City struggles with this or not, we haven't heard anything in the newspaper, but, you know, Oklahoma City is, has a different system, so to speak, than we have. They have kind of long-term, long-serving mayors, long-serving council members, long-serving. We've, if you look at the last 10 years, wherever, we've got a lot of turnover, good or bad, just an observation of council members, so that leads towards potentially more politicizing those positions. And if we're going to do this, I would really like it to see, I know we put five members, there was five on there, could hire or fire, I'd like to say go to six, I think it needs to be a supermajority. I think if you're going to, part of this is speaking as a CPA from an independent standpoint, I'd feel much more comfortable, much more independent, if I knew I had to have a supermajority of my bosses to fire me than just five, because if you think about it theoretically, we could have five new members of council in June, you get your four races as a mayor. So you've got one-year potential turnover of entire half council, and I just think you'd have five new members who had no experience with these people as managers, and I really don't think we should be managing, I think, I like the way we have it, that city managers are person, and we hold our city managers responsible, but if we decide to go down this road, we'd like to see more of a supermajority type of stuff, so that, you know, first of all, we'll, I think we'll attract a better quality candidate, knowing that their job is not necessarily on the line every couple of years, just because they make a decision or recommend a recommendation that's not politically popular, you know? I mean, I think I've always respected about Anthony is he just tells us the way it is, you know? I think part of that is because you don't have to worry about any of us firing you. You know, if we get mad at you, we say, we have to go to city managers, and Anthony's just totally crazy on us too, but, and so I don't know, if that gives you a better feel for independence, I'm going to tell you the way it is, because I don't report to you guys, but I think an independent auditor is a different deal. An independent auditor has to report, they have to have independence, because they're going to be looking at the staff, the department heads, so they can't go that way, and so.
Councilmember Biermann.
So I appreciate that you put in here that the timing of when Oklahoma City added their city auditor position, 1996, '98, something along those lines. Do we have any idea of when they did that for their city attorney? Has it always been that way?
I think, let's see.
It goes back to the '70s.
It goes back to the beginning, yeah.
Okay, so it's not new.
That charter provision is, it was in the charter in 1927, and then it's been amended a couple of times, but it's been there a long time.
Okay, yeah. And do we know, two points, do we know how many votes it takes in Oklahoma City to fire one of these positions?
Their salaries is two-thirds, let's see. It doesn't say, doesn't say, but...
Doesn't say, but, I mean, they have to set their salary with two-thirds, so I would think typically they're probably seeing a two-thirds vote to appoint someone.
Then obviously, just for the record, how many votes does it take to fire our city manager?
Five.
So would you be suggesting we change it for the city manager as well?
I think they all need to be the same. If we're gonna do that.
Councilmember Carter.
I'm vehemently opposed to that, Robert, I just philosophically disagree, because the other, the other term that you can use to describe supermajority is minority rule. And I just feel like, you know, it seems like it's functioned well for our city manager, there's nothing weird or crazy, he's been there for 10 or 11 years, so I think leaving it the same way will be fine.
Well, majority rule is, well, supermajority, majority is still, you can say something, minority rule either way, so.
Other comments?
I guess it'd be nice to have the Charter Review Commission look at this, it just seems like a substantial change. And I know we've been very proud of our efforts for transparency and community involvement lately, and this is a big deal. So I'd be all for letting people weigh in on it, especially if we've looked at it in the past, just to continue that trend, as opposed to us just doing it.
Okay. Councilmember Hickman.
I'm prepared for us to move forward, to put these items on a ballot. You know, I think that they are mirror image changes, additions, whatever, to our charter for the two positions. You know, I think that the fact that, you know, our largest city to the north, that some in our community have said we should emulate even more with our operation of our city government with regard to when we have our council meeting times, I'm not sure why we aren't willing to also follow their same lead in how they structure their government, in the sense of, you know, has you being an accountant, a CPA, and me being a lawyer, that those are professional positions, providing sort of professional services, you know, for the council. And the fact that those folks are designed through the city of Oklahoma City to report to their clients, to me, just seems to make logical sense. You know, I'm not sure that I am totally willing to fall on my sword, if you will, about opposing going to the Charter Committee Review Process, but I do certainly think that if that's the will of council, that it should be for both positions. And that we, I would then say, if we do choose to do that, then we reprogram that auditor position to be the forester and not hire that position, because I voted for that solely with the basis and understanding that that person was gonna be independent and work for council, not work for the city manager. And I think that was the comments that I heard at the time that that vote was taken when we did the budget. And so if we're willing to postpone hiring that position and reprogram that position then to be the forester, based on conversations we had recently in the CPTC meeting, then, and sending it all to the Charter Review Committee, that's not my preference, probably. But I wanted to put that out there as something for consideration, I guess, because to me, these are not significant changes, you know, in a lot of ways, considering that, you know, our largest community to our north has been doing this for decades.
Councilmember Holman.
I think the city auditor has to be under the council's purview. I don't think we would need to send that issue to a Charter Review Committee. I think that's a new position that we're wanting to, I agree, my understanding of our conversations was, that's what everybody wanted as well. So I don't, I don't think we need an opinion from the Charter Review Committee about an auditor. I would maybe like to hear their opinion about whether the city attorney should be under the council or not. I think there's a lot of merit in it. But I would like to hear what some of them think, considering, I guess it's the same members, would it be the same, so several former city council members. I would like to maybe hear their opinion about that specific issue, but I think the auditor, in my opinion, is, if we're gonna hire it, it needs to be proposed as being under us, and that's the only way I would support it as well.
Councilmember Clark.
Just a quick kind of second of Councilmember Casavere's concerns about the politicizing of a position, maybe it needs to be politicized, I don't know, but if you look at it, the majority of our council has served under three years, and that is a reality. And I would just point that out as well, and agree that, or appreciate that he did point that out, but I agree with you. We, my understanding of the auditor position too, was that it would come to us, but it was the other one that I would love to get feedback on, especially if they'd considered it in the past. And I think that historical perspective would be important.
Councilmember Casavere.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree, because of the auditor, what we talked about, but I would say this, we said we want to amend Oklahoma City, well, majority of council rejected using their time. So majority of this council has said we don't want to be like Oklahoma City on that issue. And by saying, if we're gonna take this out of the budget, I want with the forester in there, we just politicize the position. So that's what I'm concerned about, we just said, okay, well, if you'll put off putting the auditor, I'll put a forester in there, or the city attorney, that whole process, we just, you just, we've already politicized it, right now, now we're dealing. And so that's what I want to get away with, I think that both positions, I think the auditor's pretty straightforward. I mean, that has to, in any structure, that has to report to the board or the council. The city attorney, there are different ways of doing that. I guess I'll ask a question for staff. City Attorney's Office, who is, quote, the client? Is it the manager, the way we currently have it, the manager, is it individual council members, is it the council as a whole? Or, you know, I guess explain to me a little bit how our legal department works in the city attorney's position type stuffs. Make sure I have a clear understanding of, and if, and how you, and how that would change if the city attorney reported. How it would change, if it would change, if it reported, had a different, quote, loss.
Who feels comfortable answering it?
Me neither one, I can answer. The client for the city attorney is the council as a whole. So as you all act as your, as a majority, that, that's what we go out and represent. And that doesn't change regardless of who the boss is. That's our client either way, but as you know now, we take our direction from the city manager, and so that would be the difference, is who's giving the direction. But the city manager is also representing you all as a body and managing the city, so.
Unless council tells you guys to do something or not do something, then you're gonna. If we were entering negotiations on a, well, you know, we talked about buying water from Oklahoma City and doing the pipeline. Say that was something that the water department wanted to do, and you guys are negotiating contracts, water rights, stuff like that. You would do that at the direction of the city manager, unless council voted to say, no, we're not interested in doing that, so don't do it. If we said, you know, we're interested in seeing how that goes, negotiate a contract with us, work some stuff out, and then bring it to, I mean, we're ultimately gonna vote on it, but we want you guys to negotiate, work on the deal, and maybe get input from us every once in a while. Or you say, no, we're not even interested in doing this, don't even talk to them.
I think that gets to the heart of it a little bit, I was actually at a luncheon today at noon at the OCU Law School, and the speakers there were former mayor Ron Norick, and then current mayor of Oklahoma City. Jim Roth was there, got to see him, and then also Kenny Jordan, who's the city attorney for the city of Oklahoma City, those were kind of the speakers. And they were talking about then and now, but there was a question that was actually asked, I think it was from Oklahoma City reporter, about this issue, about who do you represent, and is it ever a problem in Oklahoma City that the council hires the city attorney for Oklahoma City? And of course Kenny said that was not a problem, but the follow-up question was, what happens when you have one or two council members, or less than a majority of the council members, that have one view of a particular issue that's different than the majority of the other council members? Doesn't that put you in a very awkward position as the city attorney? And he said, well, what you have to keep in mind is the council can only act by majority vote. And so until council has voted on a particular topic, I'm just providing options on legal recommendations regarding particular options that the council might choose. But until the council votes, then it's that vote that actually gives him the direction of what to implement. And so that's similar to what we have here, in that the city manager, doing the administrative part, gives us direction, but when we need a policy decision, that policy decision goes to council, and they vote by majority vote. And once that vote happens, then it's the majority, sometimes it's unanimous, not always, hasn't been unanimous for a long time in Norman. But sometimes it's unanimous, sometimes it's not. So it's whatever the majority policy that's set by majority vote of council is the direction that then the city attorney in Oklahoma City, and us as well, takes as far as taking steps to implement that policy. So, very timely that I was at that lunch, and that specific question was asked, because that's exactly what you're talking about, how do you, how do you know? Well, we represent citizens of Norman, we represent the city manager, we represent department heads, as long as they're not in conflict with the policy that's set by the council. And that policy is set by majority vote. So I hope that's helpful.
Would that change, or if we, would that change if they're reporting to the city manager, if the legal staff? I guess not the legal staff, but if the attorney reported to council?
I think it'll be the same, it's just kind of what you were talking about earlier, about whether you politicize, whether or not the legal advice being given might be shaded a little bit by whatever the political wind of the day is. And that was exactly what Councilmember Coverley, when he served on that Charter Review Committee, made a comment back to council, was, in Norman, we're different than Oklahoma City, because we want to make sure that the legal advice that we're getting is the straight legal advice that is not being shaded by what is the political wind of the day.
And he made that same comment to me, he was pretty clear about that, that that was, I do not know that that represented everybody else. That was strongly what he believed, and he believed that that was one of the things that kept the Charter Review Committee from really recommending that. They did not discuss, I don't believe, and from what I understood, they did not discuss the city attorney alone. They talked about, they, the department heads and the possibilities of politicization. But his point about the city attorney was, the city attorney is involved in, the city attorney being the whole, I think, staff. Our city attorney department are involved in all different aspects of city business. So any aspect of city business then could be influenced by politics, I mean, that was, that was kind of his explanation to me. Councilmember Scott.
Okay, so I think I'm a little near to the conversation, but I agree as far as putting the the attorney under, to the Charter Review, and then the auditor, I really, I love the idea of having an independent auditor that reports to council, I think that's excellent. And then I think there's also really, really good material in here. I'm really glad that Jeff brought up what you just did, and then, and how that works, because I understand how it can be challenging as a, between, with the relationship between council and an attorney, you know, if we don't necessarily like recommendations, or if we just, it's not okay for us to fire somebody every time they do something we don't like, which is why I kind of like the idea of the supermajority, but because the city manager position is also a five to four thing, I think I also value consistency, and I and I think it's important to Joe's point as well, so just in the middle of those things, I guess. Because there is high turnover, our seats are only two years long, and so what we may think is, you know, great work, the next person who comes in doesn't. And so I do value job security as somebody who works a full-time job. I don't really want to be, whenever I piss off a customer, I don't really want them to go to my boss, my boss be like, you're fired, because you suck. So I think that's really important for us to consider.
Is Oklahoma City, I just want to clarify.
Oh, yeah.
Or Oklahoma City's terms, I'm sorry.
I think they're, are they three years?
Four.
They're four, okay. I knew they were longer.
Another thing is, Oklahoma City is much more developed than us, I think, they're more mature, and so I don't think we have to be like them in everything we do. Especially economic development, only, yeah, I mean, their public transportation, their atmosphere, that stuff is super cool. But some of their strategies, I think that since they're a more mature city, they can get away with what we can't.
Councilmember Hickman.
I just want to clarify a few things, I'm not sure that things are clear necessarily in everybody's mind. One, these positions, like the city manager position, would have a contract. We would negotiate a contract, and there would be contracts with the city attorney, and internal, with the auditor, and with the city manager. Those contracts would typically include a severance package like the former city manager's contract did, that would protect them in the event that there was termination with or without cause. You know, because those were different terms in the prior contract, depending upon if it was, you know, resignation, termination, you know, when those things are negotiated. So there is job security, it's not like just at the whim, five council members can vote to fire, you know, any one of these three people. And there are protections, you know, for those individuals. Number two, I'm an attorney, and I do represent public boards, including school boards and others, organizations where I am accountable to that group of majority individuals that are, that serve on that board. And it's offensive to me that people would think that a professional attorney, whether Jeff, Catherine, me, or anybody, it'd be like the same thing I hear that engineers talk about, that are professionals that put their stamp on things, would politicize their legal opinions necessarily, because now they work for elected officials, or, you know, whatever you want to call them, a board, to try to protect their job. You know, that's like saying that this internal auditor that we all think is gonna be just completely not a problem, and not be politicized, even though they work for city council, is not also maybe gonna be subject to politicization. I mean, they are a professional, you know, whether they're a CPA or not, and we assume, I would hope, like we do our engineers, like Sean and others, that they're professionals, and they're gonna do their job and follow their professional standards. Just like the law, legal profession, as much as people want to bash it from time to time, we are professionals, we have ethics, and we have rules that we're supposed to follow for our clients. I will tell you that from my just fundamental perspective, you know, this isn't about anybody, you know, this is about, to me, the position. Not, you know, any, anybody currently employed, or future employed, or past employed by the city, but anybody who is an attorney, who's ever had a client, knows that you work for the client, the client has the ability to fire you and hire you. I think you've heard from our city attorney's office that the client is us, the city council as a body. It's not Joe Carter, it's not Bria Clark, it's the nine of us acting as a body, engaging in the business that we were elected to do. And by analogy, it's this body that in 90-plus percent of attorney-client relationships that have the ability to hire and fire their legal representation. That's just, I think, Attorney Law 101, if you will, that very seldom does the, does you, we, does the client not have the ability to hire and fire their legal representative? Just like I assume it'd be the same would be for an internal auditor who's also a professional. But the internal auditors, if that person was hired by the CEO of a company and not by the board, that would probably be atypical. I suspect that in the internal auditor-type world, that most of the time, that person is hired and fired by the person that they are reporting to to provide their audit details and reports. The legal profession is no different. And, you know, and I therefore don't see there's any difference between the two positions, how they work, how they would report. And if we're gonna send one of them to the Charter Review Committee, even though all of us think one of them is just hunky-dandy and a new position, so it's not really anything for the Charter Review Committee to agree on, I respectfully disagree. It is a new person reporting to city council, and that is the fundamental issue, it sounds like, that this Charter Review Committee considered. considered. They looked at it on all department heads, and I agree, all of the department heads are not the same. I, I do, I, I don't necessarily think that I would support, likely wouldn't support, other department heads. But it seems to me that the discussion the Charter Review Committee had was, should council even get in the business of having any other employees that report to them? And if that was the gist of the conversation, which I gather it was, then that would be the same for this new position that we are considering hiring. The fact that we all may think it's a great position, and we think we all did, because we funded it, I don't think it's any different if you go to our citizen Charter of Review Committee to ask them, do you think we should have this position report to council, or to the city manager, or have the position, position at all, if we choose to do that? And so to me, I, I see them as very analogous, both professional positions. And we should either send them both to the Charter Review Committee, which I don't personally feel like is necessary. But I am an attorney, and I have dealt with clients, and I represent boards. And so I'm familiar with how this kind of structure works. And that's why maybe I'm comfortable sending it forward, just like I'm sure Councilmember Castleberry as a CPA is comfortable, more comfortable, if you will, with the auditor position because of his experience as a professional.
Okay. Councilmember Carter had his hand up first, and then Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Clark. All the seats.
I've had, I've had so much feedback already, sir, from individuals. I don't feel like I need a lot more input. I respect your opinions about that, but I feel like both of these positions are really popular, this, this concept. And then, but in contrast to the, I think that, that I, I, I look at the two-year election cycle that we have as councilmen as an asset, not as a detriment. I mean, elections, as we all know, are hard. And, and, and you are entrenched with our constituents, you know. I don't know what it's like in any other city, but it seems like in this city, we are in touch. And so that makes us responsive, it makes us transparent, it makes us open. And, and so if, if the winds of this city were to sweep a group of councilmen out of office, that might be reflective of changes that need to be performed at City Hall. That's how I see it. So I see it as an asset, not a detriment.
Hey, Councilmember Scott.
No, I totally agree. I think a transfer of power is always a good thing. And then my other question is, my, my question, I guess, would be, what if we just left the auditor to report to the city manager? No?
I, I think that position should.
They should report to the council.
Industry.
Well, into Bill's point, if that's what we're doing, you know, if it's a profession, and, and I guess we need to send it, we don't need to send it to the review committee if this is what we're moving forward with?
Why, we get paid the big bucks.
I just, well.
I value citizen input. Let's send them both then. And I'm also an attorney. So there's that.
Okay.
I value that.
I'm, I'm fine with Senator, the review committee, that's what we're, both of, but the structure of the independent auditor, auditors report to the board. I mean, city attorney, there's different ways of doing it. I mean, different communities do it different ways. I don't know of any community, any board, where the auditor reports to the president of the company. It's not, that's why it says independent auditor. It doesn't say independent city attorney.
Stillwater has the internal auditor.
Anthony, have you, I mean, is that?
That's the whole Sarbanes-Oxley argument.
Yeah. That's why they put that regulation in place there, because it used to be.
I'm not sure if Stillwater's reports directly there.
Stillwater is a village.
Anthony, would you stand up then and elaborate on what you just said about Sarbanes-Oxley?
Okay, well, what I was saying was that the whole concept of the Sarbanes-Oxley Act was in response to the Enron fiasco, as you recall, because their auditors did report to the, to the CEO. And they wanted more independence, and that's why that act was put in place, to maintain that independence from the administration of the company. And we have tried to follow that, as you recall, one of the recent charter changes was about the hospital's independence from the city for that reason. And so the city council no longer approved their budget and that sort of thing, wanted to separate that. So that's one thing to be considered.
Are you trying to say there was a problem with Enron?
And I just want to point out that that's exactly the same analogy for a legal profession. Like, the schools that I represent, they have a superintendent, like a CEO. The internal auditor doesn't work for the CEO, they work for the board. As the lawyer for a school, I represent that Board of Education. I don't represent the superintendent. So it is exactly analogous in the sense of, for different reasons. But the point here just is, is that the professions are analogous in the way they're structured. The fact that some city governments, or some governments, do it differently, and how they do their legal representation or structure, doesn't mean that that's not the way that it's done in the industry. Just like there could be auditor positions that, at governmental entities, don't report to their elected board. Some of them may report to the city manager, may report, may, may report to some other staff member. But the point here just is, is that the, you know, because I have also represented superintendents who've gotten crossways with their Board of Education. And I've been representing that, that administrator, and the board has had their own attorney to negotiate, you know, you know, employment-type issues. And so that structure of independent auditor works for the, the board and not for the CEO, the administrator, is exactly the same as a legal professional who works for a corporation, or a business, or whatever you want to call it, you know, or oftentimes a school, where you work for the board, you don't work for the administrator.
But the, but the attorney of a city functions differently than an attorney for the school board. They have many more.
We're the client, just like the client's the Board of Education.
It, it, it could be client. It, I, I'm not arguing with the, the way you're seeing the positions. I'm just saying the position of the attorney for a school board and for a school is different than the attorney situation for a city. But, but my point is not to argue whether or not we should or shouldn't do it. My point at this point is that it should go to a Charter Review Committee. Councilmember Scott.
That's what I was going to say. So can we send this to the Charter Review Committee, then? Both of these? Cool.
It would be by resolution. We'd have to make sure that if you want to proceed with the members from the last Charter Review Commission, that all are still eligible and willing to serve.
I think at least one of them's moved. Yeah. So.
So the resolution is to call, to, to convene the Charter Review Committee.
Right. And we may need to be, do some appointments.
Okay.
To that commission.
And so we need to check on that to find out if we need to add some, somebody so we can be ready to go as soon as we do the resolution.
What's the time?
It just tests those two things.
What's the timeline on that, then?
It just depends on what the Charter Review Commission does with it. With just two items, I wouldn't think it would.
A resolution.
Resolution, we could get down pretty quickly. We may be able to get it done by the 13th, if you want that.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll need to check on availability of members, and we'll need to coordinate with the mayor on members, which will be.
About two weeks.
By the mayor, approved by the council.
Approved. Plenty of time, then, probably to put a resolution on the agenda for the 13th.
Hopefully, yes.
Hopefully.
That's what I heard.
We can do that. Councilmember Bearman.
I, I don't have a problem sending this to the statutory review committee, but Charter Review Committee, whatever, review committee. But I would hope that if we're going to be calling them to serve, there are other things that we've talked about, having the Charter Review Committee discuss, like seating, like if we're not going to talk about length of terms, because I can see both sides of that, I would like to address when council members are seated. I don't care about the timeline for that. I don't, you know, I don't care about getting that done before these upcoming council elections, but I, it's something that I've wanted to have addressed even before I got on council.
If we're going to call them.
You might as well call them for any number of things.
Yeah. If, if people have other Charter Review issues, that would be appropriate.
If anyone else wants to support a pay raise for council, I'd be happy to discuss that as well.
Last time, all of that, the items for targeted review were actually set out in the resolution convening the Charter Review Commission. So.
So we would put.
We would need to decide on those before November 13.
Do we not have kind of a agreement? Any other char, we had something in there about any other charge the council had, so that way.
Misleading.
Since they were already convened, if something came up. I think there was some language in there.
Well, maybe let them.
Well, one of these open-ended, you got, you know, but I think there was.
I think there was language to allow the Charter Review Commission to bring up items on their, of their own position.
There was a real controversy when they recommended that we put to a vote.
Right.
To return utility rate fee power back to council. They recommended that we do.
And I think that was actually even a holdover from a previous.
Yeah.
Maybe that should be.
For a decommission.
That would be something that would really help the city.
There's a lot of people that don't even want us to put it to a vote.
We could send that packet of information out to you with that resolution, if you'd like. And if you want to have a little bit more time to think about questions, we could shoot for the next meeting instead of the 13th, if you want to think about areas that you want to have addressed.
So let, let Mary know, I guess.
I think, I do think that's a good idea, that if we're going to convene them, let's have them look at a few other items. Because I know we did talk about the, the seating and the term, and, and I don't remember if that came from the Charter Review Committee, or if that was something that we just came up with ourselves.
And we discussed that, and then didn't, didn't move us.
But I think that that conversation is worth sending.
It took a year last time.
Yeah, I mean, I'm getting old.
But they had a lot of stuff.
Yeah. I think that's worth sending back to them, or sending to them if it never was sent to them the first time, to maybe get their input.
There's no time or urgency on this, so.
You could still, you could still hire the auditor and have, have something in there that maybe, I, I don't know. Councilmember Scott.
Out of curiosity, while we're, you know, doing all this, what do Oklahoma City council members get paid?
Oh, you don't even want to know. It'll make you so sad.
If we're trying to, you know, change our charter.
I think that's a first thing to have the Charter Review Committee consider.
I can, I thank you.
They recommend.
They did recommend.
Well, fabulous. Let's.
You got to put to her. The sunless didn't want to vote ourselves a raise.
Well.
Yeah, you won't get the raise.
It'll be in Congress.
We won't get a, we won't get a, we won't get a raise until we end the TIF and fund the senior center.
I think it should be after the election, because if you got reelected.
A refresher of what the Charter Review last recommended for, since so many.
Would be helpful.
I'm just saying, maybe they should review that. And then, yes, we can put it to the vote of the people, along with ending the TIF and funding the senior center. And then maybe.
Just wrap it all up into one.
Wrap it all up.
That's not a charter deal.
I know. I'm just saying, nobody's going to vote for a raise for city council until we do these things.
Next Tuesday, we're talking about TIFs. Everybody wants to do a TIF. We're going to talk about it in a week.
We're going to do it.
Okay. Anything else?
Provide that information.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you, guys.